Before you start.
Hello, Port Juani residents and welcome to the League of Women Voters Candidates Forum for your city council candidates. I'm Cheryl Collard. I'm a member of our League of Women Voters and I'll be moderator this evening. Moderator David Marin has the evening off. Tonight's forum will follow the usual league format in that we will allow each candidate one minute to give opening comments, followed by questions, various questions have been submitted by those of you who registered to attend this evening, and then one minute for closing comments. In addition, we are happy to be joined this evening by the Future Leaders of America, who will be asking some questions as well. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our league president Kathy Morgan for a couple of welcoming comments. Kathy?
Thank you, Cheryl, and good evening, everybody. The League of Women Voters was founded in 1920 with the mission of educating a new group of voters, women, who were granted the right to vote nationwide with the passage of the 19th Amendment. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization committed to providing voters with factual, nonbiased information, and as such, does not provide support a particular candidate or political party. The League today continues with the mission of empowering voters and defending democracy by registering voters, providing information about the candidates and the issues, getting out the votes, and supporting fair and transparent elections. The candidate forums are an opportunity for voters to hear from the various candidates and to get the information they need to make an informed choice when they vote. Attendees to the forum are invited to submit the questions they wish asked of the candidates when they register. The candidates have not been provided the questions in advance, and each candidate will have the opportunity to answer the questions posed. We are glad that you are here tonight to hear from our candidates. We hope that you get the information you need to make an informed choice. And at this time, I would like to turn it back to tonight's moderator, Cheryl. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And further at this time than I would like to invite Daniel Gonzalez to give us a few words about what the Future Leaders of America are and how they'll be joining us this evening. Daniel?
Thank you so much, Cheryl. Hello, everyone. My name is Danny Gonzalez. I'm the organizing director with Future Leaders of America. We're honored to be here today in collaboration with the League of Women Voters of Ventura County, alongside our youth advocates, who will be introducing themselves later. And a special thank you to all the candidates who could join us tonight. A little bit about my organization, FLE develops youth resiliency and leadership to create long-lasting systemic change by empowering and mobilizing youth leaders to advocate for policies and improve their lives and the lives of their peers and their communities. The future of our democracy depends on youth being engaged in the democratic process, such as this candidate forum. This is why we are co-hosting with the League of Women Voters and why our youth are playing such an active role in this forum. Additionally, our youth are out in the community canvassing and phone banking to get other youth and other community members interested in voting and ready for the election. I'll pass it back to you, Cheryl.
Thank you, Daniel. And as we get started, the first first piece of our evening will be to allow each of the candidates to introduce themselves. But I do want to remind our viewers that you can do Spanish language translation if you need that, following all the Zoom protocols. We'll leave that to you or those in your household who can assist you in making that translation possible. But we do want to make that known. So at this time, I would like to be able to start our opening comments. We did do a random order to get started, and our first candidate up in that order this evening to give opening comment will be Rich. Would you please, and for our audience, I'm going to be referring to all of the candidates. They've agreed to go with first name, but you'll see their full name on the screen, and they'll speak to you about that as they introduce themselves.
Cheryl.
Go ahead, Rich.
Before, again, I got a call from one of the other candidates, and I guess their screen is blacked out. They can't see themselves, but they're on, so you may have want to have someone check it out.
Thank you.
Okay.
So at this time, we'll start you with your one minute, Richard.
Sure. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for providing this forum. My name is Rich Rollins. I have chosen to make Port Juani my home since I retired 15 years ago. This was one of the best decisions of my life, besides marrying my wife of 45 years. My career of over 35 years has been managing community programs in a variety of cities in California. Each city had different characteristics. My challenge was to be a good listener, use my experience and common sense and creativity to develop programs and facilities that best need them met the needs of the community. I have a degree in human services management from Long Beach State. In addition, I have many years of volunteer experience in the community that I lived in, where PTA, Little League, Juani Museum, and I'm a charter member of Reach Recreation Education Arts Culture in Juani, whose goals are to raise money to improve the lives of families and seniors. I have carried this philosophy on as your councilperson for the last four years.
Thank, thank you, Richard. I have to close you off at that time. Thank you. Again, please watch the timer. We're going to hold the one minute as best we can. Rebea, you're next. Please speak. Go forth. Opening comments.
Thank you, and good evening to everyone. Thank you also to the League of Women Voters, as well as the Future Leaders of America for hosting tonight's forum. My name is Rebea Rachman. I'm a local attorney, and I'm a successful product of the California University System. I'm running for city council because I care deeply about the city of Port Juani and our community. I believe Port Juani needs new leadership on the council. While I have been out walking precincts, I have had an opportunity to just to listen to many of the residents' concerns, and I share their concerns, and I agree that we need a change. I'm running for city council because I have a vision for the future of our city, a vision for a well-run professional city government in which our taxpayer dollars are managed wisely, where residents are and feel safe, and our people can retire and raise their families. I'm very proud to have been endorsed by Jackie Irwin and retired Sheriff Jeff Dean, as well as several other organizations, all of whom trust my skills and leadership, and I hope to earn your vote and have the privilege of serving you all on council.
Thank you. Our next candidate to be speaking will be Laura Hernandez. Go ahead.
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Future Leaders of America for hosting tonight's forum. And also thank you to our audience who care about who serves on your city council. My campaign is about vision. It's about the question, how do we achieve a better place for all our residents? How do we improve our quality of life? And another question is, who has the experience and a plan to improve services for all our community? Over the past four years, I have applied my leadership and passion to improve public safety services, establish more collaborative support to protect our beaches, and increase services for the homeless. I have over 40 years of professional management experience and a record as a planner, collaborator, and someone who knows how to access key resources. I envision a professional city council that will work to lead our city to a better Port Juani. I am running for reelection to move the city forward. A vote for me is a vote for a better Port Juani.
Sorry, I have to go on to our next candidate, Seth.
Yes, I'm here.
Go right ahead. Your opening statement, please.
Yes, thank you so much. My name is Seth Brian Bunia, and I have been a Juani resident for approximately nine years. I've been married for 33 years, have two wonderful boys and three wonderful grandchildren. I'm also a veteran military police officer with a active duty deployment. One of the reasons I want to run for city council is to give my vision to the city and to the people of Port Juani. When we hit ground here, we had started actively seeking out those who needed assistance. We do large food distributions, backpack drives, a lot of things that happen within, but I am community oriented, people oriented, been doing it for 20 years, and I have a great vision for this city. I would love to earn your vote, if possible, to be your next council member, a new council member for you, and move the vision that I have for this city forward. Thank you for your time, League of Women. Thank you so much for the opportunity as well.
Thank you, Seth. And our next candidate giving open opening statement is Thomas. Please go ahead.
Yeah, hi. My name is Tom Tialla. I've only lived here for a couple of years. I mean, me and my wife moved here a couple of years ago. We love the area. There's some obvious glaring problems with with there's open storefronts. There's, or I should say, for lease storefronts. There's a lot of problems that can be addressed, and really, with just better management can be, it can be fixed. And this could be the crown jewel of Ventura County, out of doubt. You got a beautiful beach. You have very great city. I'm an active, active, active member of the VFW. I served in the personal go for back in the early 90s. So yes, I just dated myself a little bit. But we, you know, we, me and my wife have both been very active with there. We brought back a lot of different veteran-related events, and I think I can do the same thing at the city level.
Thank you, Tom. Our next candidate to speak will be Martha.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you, League of Women and the Future Leaders of America for hosting us tonight. I am Martha McQueen-Lajon. I was born and raised in Oxnard, moved to Port Juani in 2010. I am a wife and a mother. As a councilman, I will work tirelessly to ensure community members feel included, safe, and that our students receive the necessary tools to achieve their educational goals and ensure that our city remains viable in the future. I will represent all, all members, and I will be an advocate for you. I will be a steward of taxpayer dollars. I will work diligently to make Port Juani a city our residents want to continue to call home. I hold a doctorate and a master's in organizational leadership and management and a diversity and inclusion certificate from Cornell University. I recently retired from 33 years of service. I'm an adjunct professor, and I, my campaign focuses areas on community engagement, safety for the city, economic growth and opportunities, education, and
Thank you, Martha.
sustainability. Thank you.
And our last candidate to speak this evening will be Luis.
Hello. Thank you to the Women, League of Women Voters and Future Leaders of America for joining us and hosting this. My name is Luis Mendez. I'm a 37-year resident of Port Juani. Went to Juani High School and have a BA in Communication Studies from the California State University of Northridge. I've been a member of different organizations, nonprofit and trade organizations here in Ventura County, which have given me the tools and experience to help lead the city forward. My campaign will focus on growth, safety, and housing for the city of Juani. Like I said, Juani is my home. I love it. It is my passion, and I would love the opportunity to serve you guys as your councilman. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we would like to ask the candidates, we'll start with the first question from the Future Leaders of America, and that will be addressed by Monse Sanchez. If she would please come on and be ready to ask that question, before she starts her question, I'd like to give her a moment just to introduce herself and give us, give us an opportunity to meet her.
Hello, everyone. My name is Monse Sanchez. I attend Oxnard High School, and I live in Port Juani. And my current educational goals are to do it to your promise at a local community college, get my A in psychology, and transfer to a four-year to get my master's in social working. And personally, I think elections are really important because I come from an immigrant family where voting has never been an option, and I want to make sure that voices are heard and that it's encouraged. And I think voting is a safe manner of being an advocate for your own community and for yourself. And personally, I live in an apartment, and it's about five complexes, and my father has just, he's had three bypass surgeries in the past two months, and his lungs are vulnerable, and he has trouble breathing. And I have an active smoker as a neighbor, which has been really difficult. And more than one in three non-smokers who live in rental housing are exposed to secondhand smoke, and the smoke can drift through vents, doors, windows, hallways, and electrical outlets, and the gaps around fixtures and our walls. There are no protections in a place like mine or any apartment in Juani to help our families. And I was asking, how can you ensure that families like mine are protected from second and third hand smoke?
Thank you for that excellent question, and we're going to start your question with Seth. Would you please respond to how to deal with secondhand smoke? Seth?
That's, yeah, that's, yeah, that's a good question. That's a really good question, and I'm hoping your family member is doing well at this time. One thing, if you're living in a car apartment complex, there's a lot of laws and regulations that we have in place that are supposed to protect residents who live within these type of dwellings. So I would say that what I can come up with is that being able to get a hold of property owners and look at their guidelines as far as what they have in place as far as this concern that you have and how they can possibly mitigate the problem for for you specifically, say, you as a youth and your family as well. That would be one avenue that we could take, again, to speak with the property owners. One of the best things to do is just not to have a no smoking area. There's a lot of places that have that. You can't do it in particular areas. And maybe it could be something that could be introduced to where this could be a viable idea to pass along to apartment complexes as well for the protection.
Thank you, Seth. We need to end your, end your response there. The next candidate to respond, Rich. How?
First of all, I've had some of my relatives die of lung cancer, so I can relate to where you're coming from in your family. The first thing you should probably do is to approach your neighbors and let them understand the suffering that your father has received. And perhaps, you know, on good human nature, they will try to move away and smoke someplace other than what would come into your home. The second thing I think was brought up earlier is that you talk to the apartment owner in the, in your HOA to develop a non-smoking area, more like better is outside. And then third, you as a, as a student group should educate that community as to the problems with smoking and how it affects people that are in a fragile state.
Thank you. Thank you, Rich. Our next response will come from Martha.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I think the last two responses were spot on. And I think also, like Richard mentioned, you know, we would hope that we, we have humanity in our environment, right? And so I would agree with possibly first going to your neighbor and communicating to your neighbor the issue that your father is having and with his health. And so, and like the others mentioned, it's important also to understand what the rules and regulations are in your apartment complex and the HOA. I know there are some laws that prohibit smoking in places. I'm not sure that one of them is in your, your, your private residence or around your private residence, but I would definitely looking to that to see what the rules and regulations are around your apartment complex.
Thank you. Our next candidate to respond to the question will be Rebea, please.
Thank you. Monse, thank you so much for being here tonight and for being so civically engaged. I think it is so inspiring and encouraging to see the Future Leaders of America and students like you actively participating in forums like this. So thank you so much for being here and for sharing your, your experience. The issue of smoking and secondhand smoke and is, or the issue of secondhand smoke is it's a balancing of rights and liberty interest. You have, you and your family have a right to be healthy in your home, to not be exposed to secondhand smoke. However, your neighbor does have a right to engage in the activity in his home. And so I think that this, this is could be hopefully resolved by, you know, enhancing education and collaboration amongst other HOAs and other neighbors, as well as collaborating and engaging in advocacy around the harm that could come from secondhand smoke. And so this is a very, it's a complicated issue, and, and I understand that maybe we can't legislate around it, but there's advocacy that can be engaged in in order to address the issue adequately.
Thank, thank you. We need to go on to our next candidate to take the question. Laura, please. Laura, let's see here where she.
Yeah.
There we go. There we go. We'll start you again. Let's get our timer working. Sorry there, Laura. We got, we'll get our timer working so you have one minute. I'm not seeing our timer come up.
The timer starts when she starts talking.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Monse, for your question. You know, I've been so proud of the work of the Future Leaders of America. I met them several years ago, and they've been before our city council to advocate against flavored tobacco and vape pens and the sale of those to minors. As many of us know, we have many of those shops in Port Juani. The last time they presented, they asked for an ordinance to be passed to ban smoking in multi-housing units. And it's a very difficult decision to make. I know we're looking at it. I have a smoker in my house, and it's very difficult for me to live with secondhand smoke. Although he's trying to stop, it's very difficult. I think you should continue to come to our city council and continue to work with us in finding solutions. Thank you again for your question, Monse, and I wish you the best of luck and better health for your dad.
Thank you. And our next candidate up to speak about the question is Luis. Luis, go ahead, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Monse, I just wanted to say, congratulations. I appreciate what you're doing. I, in fact, was a Future Leader of America back in 1990. I'm actually the, on the logo of your organization, I'm the guy in front of the White House. Either way, I do appreciate your scenario, and I'm really, I'm sorry to hear about the, your father's ailments. A couple of things I'd like to suggest, obviously designated smoking areas are one way to handle it. But I moved around when I was going to college, and there are certain organizations like for the county city that may provide weatherization for your home. What that does is make sure that no hot air or cold air during the summer or the winter escapes your home. They provide filters, and what that might do is prevent smoke from coming in, especially if you have a neighbor and a vet that divides your guys' balls. That's one thing you might want to look into. There are services out there that do provide that at no cost. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. And our, our final candidate to speak, and that will be Thomas.
He's muted, Cheryl.
I'm sorry. This timer ready to go?
The timer is ready. When you're ready, please start.
Okay. So thank you for your question, and that's a new one. That's a tough one to come across. First of all, I have a few associate's degrees, and I went to junior college myself before I went off and got my bachelor's degree. So I commend you for doing that. And my wife is actually here, master's degree is in social work, so from NYU, so good choice. Second, it's a tough question, because like you said, you have rights, your neighbor has rights. I know there's places, not necessarily in Port Juani, but in Oxnard, where you cannot smoke inside the complex. And I would, as a city council person, I would definitely look into what those laws are. I think a lot of them have to come down to, are the government subsidized housing? If not, then you can't, you can't, there's, there's a whole, there's only so much you can do. So I would talk to your neighbor. If you don't get any response, talk to the management company or you're the owner of the property and see what could be done.
Thank you. And thank you, Monse, for the questions and participating at this time, and now we're going to go on. Well, we'll call Maya Lopez will be coming on later to ask you another question from the group. But the next question comes from the participants who have registered for this evening, and we'll start with the question of the economy and business and jobs in Port Juani. The question is, how do you plan to attract new businesses, retain existing businesses, and what is your sense of what needs to be happening with some of the vacant shops and businesses that are no longer in existence in Port Juani? And the question, we'll start with Seth for your response, please. Seth, go ahead. When you're ready, the timer will start.
Yes, thank you. Attracting new businesses, that's something that's been in the forefront of my mind for quite some time here. Portland, Amy's a very small town, approximately 22,000 peoples, and I think we just have to learn what we have to do since we have, we don't have a lot of room to build out. So we're going to have to work within the parameters of what we have existing for local businesses. I'm not sure, I gotta be honest, I'm not real familiar on what the current plan is to get our exposure out there for new businesses to come into Port Juani. We don't have a brand name here for other, we have a Ross, and you've got all these outlying shops next to it, but we don't have a main hub where people can build out from there. The small businesses are a big, a big hub revenue for the city of Port Juani, and I believe there's other methods that we can take. I'm not going to have enough time to talk about it with a one-minute limit as to what we can possibly do. But my idea is to take what we have now, build off of that, and make our city more vibrant.
Thank you, Seth. We'll have to, have to end it there. Our next candidate to speak on the topic would be, Richard, what are some of your thoughts about how to attract new business, managing the vacancies?
Well, first of all, this has been something that has been in the council's awareness for a long time. We need for the existing businesses that are underserving the community, we need to look at perhaps changing the zoning laws. So for example, Mary's Market, we need to perhaps look into buying affordable housing above Mary's Market, get a developer to do that, and then that would be able to provide business for the local businesses below. Another thing we need to do is we need to work with the port in the Navy and develop incentives for us to get high-tech businesses. Those will be businesses that create good jobs for our community, so they'll be able to get homes in our community. Finally, a good, a good economy is good for the community. We need, we have done a good job about adding new businesses that serve directly the community.
Thank you, Richard. I have to stop you there. A minute, a minute goes quickly. I know it goes quickly.
I just wanted, I wanted to make a mention. I can, whenever I'm speaking, all I see is the LWV. I don't see the timer, so forgive me.
All right. Our next candidate will be Martha to be speaking about the subject of attracting new business and how you might be able to deal with the vacancies as well. Martha?
Yes, thank you. I think first we need to determine what type of business we want in our city. We have a very small city, so not all businesses will really work for our city. So we have to be strategic in thinking, in looking at what kind of businesses do we want to bring to this less than five-square-mile city. And so I think that COVID has provided an opportunity in, and foster kind of the entrepreneurial spirit with folks creating small businesses. And so I think we really need to foster that. We need to educate our, our residents to what it takes to really grow a business in Port Juani. And then we need to be able to provide some kind of a resource to help them into creating small businesses to then manage our vacancies. Thank you.
Thank you. And next step on this will be, Thomas, would you please respond to the question as well? Thank you.
Um, yeah, of course I will. Um, yeah, again, again, we've only been here for a couple of years, and there's a ton of storefronts, all of the city that are for lease. I don't understand why. I would love to start a business here. I would like to. But I think they need to be businesses. I don't think it's the tech stuff that you need, you know, you're not going to get anyone to come here for tech because it's too far from the freeway. But a thing like a donut shop, an ice cream parlor, a surf shop, these are all things that the beach community should have. Every house, every building I've ever lived in, every house, house or apartments always had a donut shop within a block or two from us. I don't know why that doesn't happen here. There's no donut shops here, by the way. So I think we need to bring in businesses into these already vacant storefronts that are, that will help the community and even help tourism, if that's the way we want to go. I think that's our best bet.
Thank you. And next to Rebea, you'll be the next one to talk to us about your vision of new businesses, retaining business, and dealing with vacancies.
Thank you. Job growth and economic development are two of my highest priorities. The issue of attracting high-paying jobs are intertwined with other issues. We cannot just, we cannot attract good businesses if you don't have quality housing, safe streets, excellent schools, and recreational opportunities. So Portland really needs an economic development strategy or a plan going forward. We do have, we are a beach community. We have a lot of assets that will attract businesses to our city if the council can create the right environment. My plans include creating a business council that will focus on, first, retaining the businesses that we already have, but also exploring the businesses, why we, the businesses that did not survive the pandemic were lost, and what we can do to assist in bringing them back. I'll be an active listener to our and what we can do to assist in bringing them back. I'll be an active listener to our business community and their needs. We can also look into creating a business incubator for startups to help create high-paying jobs and collaborate with the Oxnard College and other local universities or colleges to help train our students to meet the needs of the modern economy and promote entrepreneurial opportunities.
Thank you for those comments. Our next speaker will be Louise. Would you please go forward on the question of how to deal with new business, retaining old business and dealing with storefronts that are empty? Louise?
I will. Thank you. I think the last part of that question was what storefronts that are empty? I think, you know, zoning or actually utilizing multi-use properties would be appropriate. Someone said earlier regarding Mary's, I call that shopping center trade winds. I've been in Huinemi 37 years. It was trade winds when I moved there. And taking properties like that and using building upwards for residents and maintaining storefronts, I think is viable. You know, we have the port and the Navy base right there. When I was younger in the eighties, the port and the base had programs with elementary schools where they develop workers and people would actually leave, you know, two periods to go work. I had different jobs on the port. I think that's something that the city might want to look into creating to help develop our own residents to get these good paying jobs and train with those two big employers that we have within our own city walls. Grocery store, I think is important because I hate traveling to the collection 20 minutes to get there. I think we need a really good anchor store for that trade winds market center that the community will use. So those are things that we'll look into.
Thank you. And our next speaker will be Laura. Would you please give us your comments on that question?
Sure. One of my top concerns has been our small businesses and our business community. I think that we've been looking at this in, in bits and pieces and what we really need is a comprehensive economic development plan that takes a broad look at where our deficiencies are and where we can make improvements to fill those vacancies and to draw employers into our community. We have the potential to be a technological hub by working with organizations like Fathom Works and the Navy Base and the Port of Huinemi and the school districts and universities for creating that pathway to fill those jobs with students who are trained with STEM skills and, and learn how to do coding and robotics and build a community of workers who are trained for the 21st century. I think I've talked to many business owners and I think we need to do a better job inviting businesses to our community. Thank you.
Thank you Laura. I'd like to move on to our next question, which is a question of priorities. We have questions about what, to you who are on the incumbents, what has been your greatest accomplishment over your last four years that would merit returning you to your, to the office? And to the challengers, what do you seek to accomplish in your first couple of years if you were elected? What should be the main priorities for running the city of Port Huinemi's activities, running for council and so on? So if you would speak to your accomplishments and priorities, and we're going to start with Thomas on this question. When you're ready, Thomas?
Okay, good. I'm muted. I'm not unmuted. Well, obviously my greatest accomplishment in the last four years has been marrying my wife. We, we, we met and I got married a week later. So that's been my greatest accomplishment. As far as when we moved here, been very active with the VFW. I brought back karaoke. We do live music on Sundays. We do hamburgers on Wednesday. We do all kinds of fundraisers. And it's, they've been very successful. The VFW is doing very well here in Port Huinemi, very, very well. And I, like I said, I think I can bring that at the city level. You know, the, I think the fireworks are an issue. The for lease storefronts are an issue. The having a better relationship with the Navy is an issue. I think, you know, there's, there's, there's things that need to, it's not in bad shape. The city's not in bad shape. It could be a little bit better.
Thank you. Next, the next person to speak will be Laura. Tell us a little bit about what you've accomplished in your term and what you would hope to accomplish towards making the city a better place.
Okay, thank you. When I joined the city council in 2019, I set out to do several things, all of which I believe I've accomplished, but now I'm hoping to continue that good work. Since joining the city council, I've been pivotal in the development of a citywide strategic plan, navigating the city's response to the COVID-19 pandemic and completing the city's emergency, emergency operations plan. I've also been instrumental in increasing services for the unhoused, which what is one of my top priorities. And also forming collaboratives with county Navy base, support of Huinemi and the Beach Erosion Authority for the protection of our beaches against antirose. I am a big supporter of regional collaboration and I think many of our problems can be solved by having trained and educated and professional representatives on our city council who can be at the table representing cities' interests. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, and that will be Rich. Tell us what you feel you've accomplished in your first term and what you see as the challenges for the city?
Yes. When I came to the city compared to other cities, we were vastly under served, underserving our youth community. Since we've come on board and we've been able to benefit by some of the additional revenue, we're developing a teen center that will provide programs and role models, build self-confidence and include, in an inclusive environment free of bullying. We've developed learn to swim programs. We have hired a landscape arperist to upgrade our tree inventory to develop policies, better policies to make our trees healthy and make our city beautiful. We have the safest community in 10 years. We've hired additional police officers. We're proud of the work that they do. And we'll, we'll continue, there, there's many, many things that we need to improve on. You never want to rest on your laurels.
Thank you for those comments. And now to our next candidate who will speak on the challenges of what you would do in your first term would be for Louise, would you take us on your thoughts about what you would do in your first term? What could be improved in the city while you're running for council?
Excuse me, thank you for that. Obviously my, well, my three things I want to focus on is safety, homeless and growth. I think the safety and homeless go hand in hand. And coming out of pandemic, you know, which is really hard on the city. I know that the cannabis kind of helped the city out to get out of a potential or possible bankruptcy or insolvency. And what I haven't heard is growth. Part of the pay for the services for homeless and address safety and give the police officers the equipment and infrastructure they need to serve our city takes money, you know, and we got to look at different ways to generate new revenue for the city to cover these things. Inflation is obviously up, so that means the cost of police officers, you know, and other city services are up. So I think we need the, the council itself does need to take a deep dive and collaborate with how to address these things. And, and growth, I think is necessary to pay for the increased cost of services and to offer more services to the city. You know, that they, that they can enjoy, but all of it takes money. So we need a growth plan to generate money is what I think.
Thank you. And our next candidate to speak about priorities that they would focus on in their first term will be Martha. You're up Martha.
Thank you. My number one priority is community engagement. I believe that we can be more successful as a city if we bring our residents into the fold. And canvas scene, that's one of the things that I'm hearing a lot is that people just don't know what's going on in the city. And in order for us to be successful, I think we need to do the outreach to the community and not the community to do the in-reach to us. I'd like to be able to foster that community engagement and create opportunities to where our community members can actually engage with leadership and not in a city council meeting and not in an official forum. I want to be intentional about establishing these forums so that we can create that trust and then be able to make decisions and then go forward. The other area is environmental sustainability. I'd like to ensure that we're creating our infrastructure in, and for the future. We're talking about EVs coming. We're talking about erosion on the beaches. So I think we have some real work to do as it relates to our environmental sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you Martha. And next up on the question Seth, are you ready to take the question on your priorities at what you'd like to accomplish in the first couple of years if you're elected?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much. Higher paying jobs seems to be a problem here since we really don't have the space to do that right now. As I stated before, we need to work off of what we have. The trade winds building has been a fiasco for years. This, this owner of this building wants $3 million, $3.5 million to sell it and not actually do anything. So it's just been nothing but an eyesore within our community. We serve two, and also we serve 250 individuals every month. My wife and I have been in community service for over 20 years. And the biggest asset, as I mentioned before in previous meetings, is that people are our biggest assets that we have. We need to make a better agreement with the port. I believe right now we get $2.5 million from them. The homelessness has been, it's just an ongoing fiasco. I'm not, with this current council, I've been dealing with it for 20 years and nine while I'm here. So it really hasn't been mitigated properly. I've been dealing with it. I know how to deal with it. I know what's been done and what hasn't been done. So there's so many viable things that we can do and it's money. We get money from the.
Thank you Seth. Need to cut you off there, sorry. And Rabia, you will be the last speaker on this one. What do you envision as your priorities and what you would like to accomplish in your first few years?
My top priorities for city council are the focusing on the environment, public safety and the economy and to address the issue surrounding the environment. I think it's critically important begin collaborating and learning from, collaborating with, learning from our local, our nearby cities as well as developing a environmental sustainability strategy in collaboration with the Navy and the port. Regarding public safety, it is important to again, build collaborative partnerships between the community and our public safety agencies and to enhance the trust between the community and the public safety agencies. I am very proud to have been endorsed by the Tewa County Professional Firefighters Association and the Port Huinemi Police Officer Association who trusted my leadership around the issues of public safety. And with regard to the economy, I recently, my last answer, I shared with, with, with you some of my proposals for how I would address job growth and, and the economy, but also recreational space. We need to administer the plan that has been recently developed.
Thank you Martha. We, excuse me, Rabia, we need to move on. Okay. At this time, I'd like to turn the conversation back to our future leader of America representative. This time it will be Maya Lopez if she will come up forward and she will have a question for you before she gives you that question. Brief introduction to your question Maya, welcome.
Hello everyone. My name is Maya. I currently reside in Oxnard. I'm a senior at Oxnard High School. And right now I'm applying to colleges as a senior, so I'm super excited. My number one goal is to get into a four-year right out of high school. And another goal of mine is also to navigate the role I was given as student trustee on the Oxnard Union High School District and to really listen to students and listen to what they need. I really think that voting is super important because it's, it's an opportunity to advance in democracy and really like encourage political liberalization, which is super important. So my question is according to the National Institute on Drug Abuse, one in four high school seniors vape in the month. So what will you do to address the use of flavored tobacco and e-cigarettes among youth in the city of Port Huinemi and become a driving force to end the vaping epidemic?
Thank you for that question. And that is going to Martha to start. How to deal with vaping and the youth in Port Huinemi?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. So in Port Huinemi, as mentioned before, there are several or businesses that actually sell vaping equipment. So, so equipment is not supposed to be sold to, I believe it's under 18. You should not have the, be able to buy vaping material. But I think that we have to make sure that we are engaged. We need to understand what the issues are in Port Huinemi. And then we need to just make sure that we maybe establish ordinances with our businesses within Port Huinemi about not being able to, to sell or, or deal with companies that possibly do sell. I'm not a smoker. I'm not really sure about vaping, but I think that we can do something in the city council to mitigate the issues that we might be having as it relates to student smoking.
Thank you Martha. Next on the question of vaping and students' concerns, Laura, with that question will go to you.
Okay, thank you Maya for that question and I wish you the best of luck in your college pursuits. I went from high school directly to a four-year college and it was the best time of my life. So I'm very excited for, for your pursuits. And I also want to thank the future leaders of America for coming to our city council and bringing to our awareness the issues surrounding the use of flavored tobacco and vapes. We also informed us that under the American Lung Association in terms of taking action to protect our youth from harmful products by vaping or smoking, that we had a grade of F. We had not done anything to prevent that. With your help, with the help of the future leaders of America, we have adopted several ordinances and will continue to work with the future leaders of America to do more in protecting our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker on the topic is Louise.
Thank you. Maya, good luck to you and your endeavors. Hopefully you get accepted to, for your university. I was part of ASB Institute of Government in high school and it's a great, it's fun. You'll love the experience. This is a hard issue because, you know, flavored cigarettes, people are adults and they're allowed to do what they, what they want, if they enjoy it, you know. Port Huinemi has cannabis facilities. It's not flavor, but it's still smoking, you know, so I think the key lies in education. You know, you can reach out to nonprofit organizations. California does have a non-cestation or smoking cessation program. You can have them come and do presentations at your school, maybe collaborate with the city of Port Huinemi and have non-smoking events just to bring education to students. You know, I grew up with parents that smoked and they smoked back in the eighties in the car with me. So, you know, times change and I don't do that and you know, smoke in the car with me now. But I think education and providing the information to students directly is a responsibility of the schools and parents as well.
Thank you. And our next speaker on the topic of vaping and student use of, needs of assistance from the city would be Rich. Would you go forward with your comments, please?
Yes, I want to thank the future leaders of America for coming to our council meeting a couple of times. We've listened to what you've said and we've passed ordinances to try to make this a little bit better. I think with everything else, I think education at an early age is going to be the best positive thing. I'll give you an example. My five-year-old granddaughter has been taught at an early age that certain foods are bad for you and, and grandpa, you shouldn't be eating them. And so, so if you teach kids at an early age, they're able to kind of help educate not only the adults, but then turn the right way. The other thing is to provide positive activities so kids don't feel the need to go vaping. The explorers, we have the sea cadets, a number of different programs that kids develop self-confidence so they don't need to get into vaping.
Thank you Rich. Next on the topic, Thomas, you're up.
So yes, again, thank you for your question. I have, I have two sons and they're freshmen and seniors from high school. They're 18 and 14. And, and I talked to them about smoking. They're well aware that they shouldn't do it. But, you know, I remember when I was 18 and you don't really listen to your parents so much. So again, a lot of people here had said education. I think that's a great way to at least start the process. Maybe have the Lung Association have a tent over the next Huinemi Festival or the Banana Fair or something like that. But I also think that we could do something within our, our community with the police department, selling to underage. And that's where my cat comes in. So he just decided to show up and make a visit. We, we adopted her about a year ago, by the way. Anyway, I think the, having the police come in and make sure that, that this stuff's not sold to anyone under 18, I think is, would also be a benefit.
Thank you, Thomas. Next speaker Rabia, please give your response.
Yes, so I agree. We have laws that should be enforced when it comes to underage access to vaping and flavored tobacco. But I think it also, I agree with some of the other responses in which it really comes down to education, advocacy and outreach. The council could definitely be working closer, closely with the local high schools and middle schools to really help with an educational campaign in order to address the harms that are related to smoking. I'm old enough to remember when we, we saw this issue before with, with minor smoking and having access to cigarettes. And but I think as it goes, as it, as it relates to most vices, you know, when it comes to alcohol or tobacco or vaping, if, if, if somebody wants to engage in that, they will. And so what we can do on our end is to help promote the, the health-related aspects and elements and help bring up some sort of campaign around the harms. and help uh, okay, do um, bring up some sort of campaign around the harms that come to them from vaping.
Thank you. And our final uh, speaker on this will be Seth. If you'd give us your comments, please.
Yes, thank you so much, Maya. Thank you so much. One of the things I would like to uh, present to you, Maya, is education. Education is so important. I know you were looking to go four years to college, but this problem with smoking and vaping has become a national issue. And it's tragic when you look at the deaths that occur every year because of this. You sound like you would be an outstanding advocate and you should stand up, be tall. You sound like a bold person. You sound like a, you're going to be a future leader of America. And one of the things that we need to do is we overtask law enforcement a lot with it uh, with with so many things. Violators need to be penalized. They need to be penalized for giving uh, these type of instruments to young youth. Um, but you as a, your peers, your peers are very important too. If you're pressured by your peers, it's going to be very hard for you to quit. So I'm going to encourage you to be an advocate for for yourself, for your school, for your friends, anybody that you're around. And like, as I stated, we can come up with policies that will penalize the violators heavily so we can protect our children in this community.
Thank you, Seth. Thank you. And that will conclude our questions with Future Leaders of America. Thank you. The next topic is one that uh, several of you have addressed slightly in your comments. We'll take it in a broader way this time, and that's the subject of public safety. In the city of Port Wainimi, uh, your police uh, chief is making change, is changing his uh, uh, work and will be leaving the city. The city will be looking at uh, replacing the chief. So one of the questions is what would, how would you go about that? What will your criteria be? And of course, police and safety uh, costs are high for a small city. Do you agree with the way in which the budget is currently being used? Would you consider a different way to contract for services, possibly with the sheriff's department as other small cities do? So this is a broad question on public safety and an opportunity for you to give us your best thoughts in one minute. And uh, this time on a rotation, we'll start with Laura. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, one of my um, priorities has always been public safety. I've worked in law enforcement um, and with law enforcement for over forty years um, as part of my career in emergency management. I don't support the idea of contracting our law enforcement services out to uh, the county sheriff's department. I worked for the county for fifteen, sixteen years. They're a great organization, but they're not for Port Wainimi. We like our officers. We like the hometown feel that we get from our, our, the same officers, seeing them every day. They get to know the community. And so I I don't think um, I would support um, that kind of move. Um, public safety is um, has been approved since um, Salinas joined us. We hate to see him go, but he's going on to a better and um, a more uh, better profession where he can use his resources. But it's going to be a participative process. Everybody will have an opportunity to weigh in how we select our next chief of police. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next was that question, Thomas, your opportunity to answer questions about public safety, police chief hiring, how you might go forward with that.
Um, you know, the 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 current police chief, he's actually really, really a nice guy. He's actually really good. I think the police department's great here. I think we need to readdress, rearrange their priority list. Um, there's lots of speeding on the Wainimi Road and on Ventura and Channel Islands. We need to do something about cutting that down. Um, there is a problem with homeless. That's an issue that needs to also be addressed. And I, so I think um, with the with the help of the police department, and I have no problem helping out on this, uh, we need to re-prioritize what the police, what what what's their priorities? Uh, you know, is it the fireworks? That's always a big issue. Is it the speeding? That's an always an issue. And is it um, the homeless? That's an issue as well. And we need to work within the legal parameters and then work with um, some outside agencies, the VA, the 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 mental health, uh, to help the homeless, something to address those priorities that we set.
Thank you, Thomas. Next up for this question is Louise, your discussion of public safety, retaining the uh, public safety as it is, seeking a new police chief and so on.
Yeah, I'll try to touch all the broad topics you mentioned. Um, really quickly, I've known I'm not for the city contracting sheriff's department. I am for our local police department. The guys are great. I've actually met with them several times and you know, but I think the city needs to invest in a little bit more is infrastructure for them and modernize their equipment because there's a lot of waste going on when it comes to emergencies or callouts. So you know, there's about three officers on patrol at one time. And you know, they don't, they lack the infrastructure to communicate with fire department and first responders. So you get all three people go into one spot when it really only needs to be one, you know, whether it's the police or the fire department, not all three services. So I think of being a modernizing, modernizing their infrastructure will help save money and allow for us to address other issues such as crime or homelessness. Um, as far as how to give you police chief, I think that the community does need input, but we should also rely on um, recruiting services that help look for qualified individuals that will help fit our city specifically. So I think as long as there's a collaboration between the city, the community, we should pick the right police officer or chief to take his place.
Thank you. Next speaker, Rabia, please give us your thoughts.
Thank you. I am in agreement. I am not in support of um, contracting with the sheriff's department for our police services. I believe the city of Port Wainimi has done a lot to maintain our police force. And I believe our police um, department has done a really good job in helping keeping the community safe. And I, and 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 under the leadership of Andrew Salinas, Chief Salinas, who is moving on, um, the the police department has done a great job at putting the community first and being very community-centered. And I think that 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 characteristic, that qualification is should be of the highest importance in the search for the next police chief to fill that position because we need to make sure that our police department is community-centered and continues to work to build trust and collaboration with the community. Um, and and so in in the in the search, we need to be searching for a candidate who is community-oriented and community-centered and it continues to build on the work that Andrew Salinas has done for the community.
Thank you. Martha, your comments?
Thank you. Yeah, I I too disagree with the um, contracting with the sheriff's department. I think that our police department is doing a great job under the Chief Salinas. Um, I believe that um, that uh, that the community wants to know who is uh, responding to their calls. And so relationships are created. Um, I think our community is safe, uh, feel safe when our Port Wainimi police show up. Um, one of the things that I would really like to make sure that we do, uh, the chief is leaving, we know that, but we really must be intentional in um, how we make our selection. As our culture changes, so must uh, the requirements of the job. So we do want to make sure that we get someone in there that is uh, community-oriented, um, that is um, um, uh, has the experience, has integrity. Um, and so we we really want our community to be safe, and so we need someone to do that. And I think we can do that collaboratively.
Thank you. Uh, next upon the question is uh, Rich, your thoughts about uh, public safety, how the police department ought to operate and how we might select a new police chief?
Well, I'm a little biased because I think we have probably one of the best police forces in Southern California. So switching to a a county police is not even an option with me. Uh, we have the lowest crime rate in ten years. We have one of the quickest response rates. The number one thing as I go out and visit the community is that they want a safe community. They may want a lot of other things, but they want to feel that when they go home at night, it's a safe place to be. Uh, to hire, uh, we've had a jewel in um, officer Salina, I mean, Police Chief Salinas. Um, to get someone like that, we're going to have to reach out to the community. We're actually going to have to reach out to the police officers to officers to see who they feel needs to lead. We need to talk to the city council. We want somebody that um, has the attributes to keep our city as safe of it as it is now.
Thank you. And the final speaker on this topic will be Seth. Please go ahead with your thoughts on public safety.
Yes, thank you so much. Uh, the PHPD is a wonderful department, so I am absolutely opposed to bringing the sheriff's department. At one time, I thought it would be a good idea when I started looking at twenty eighteen and the problems we were having financially. So uh, but the pot shops took care of that, and I think we're in pretty good financial order right now. We have a very safe community, the lowest uh, crime rate. Uh, they went to historic lows. We have LPRs, which are license plate readers all over the city. We have facial recognition. We have shot spotters. We have a lot of uh, safety uh, measures that are taken. Uh, I'm opposed to that somewhat be just because of Big Brother, but I think that's one of the reasons why we're so safe here in a Port Wainimi. Uh, I'm hoping that we can find a police chief that has all the years of experience and a perfect track record uh, showing no abuses of authority whatsoever. We haven't had that kind of problem here in Port Wainimi, and I think we're doing, we're doing pretty good. Uh, the crime rates are, the crime rates are low. Firework could be an issue. Channel Islands and Ventura Road.
Thank you. I need to stop you there, Seth. We'll go on to, thank you. We're, we're on to our uh, next question. Uh, we're going to move on to topics related to the environment. And one of the uh, questions that came forward is how would you as council members deal with the EPA site uh, that is in your neighboring Oxn- with your neighbor Oxnard, and that's referring to the old Halico site? What would the city of Port Wainimi be able to do to deal with the issues that take place on that site? How to get that site removed, move more quickly, if that's possible? And particularly in light of climate changes with uh, what would be expected, rising tides and erosion? And how that particular prod- that particular property affects both Port Wainimi and your neighbor Oxnard? Are there ways you can deal with that? And first up on that question is going to be uh, Rabia. If you would start that off for us, please.
Thank you. So I had an opportunity to attend the recent EPA Town Hall addressing the Halico site. And I think that we need to be more actively engaged with the EPA on their process and how they intend to work through and clean up that that site. Because as you said, it does impact us all and has, I mean, and and it's been an issue, an ongoing issue for for decades. Um, for this, this is the kind of issue that I think my skills as an attorney are uniquely situated in position for so that can help navigate through some of the uh, difficult um, conflicts, like issues as as they arise and, you know, negotiating and discussions with the EPA and what the city has the capacity to do in helping move that process forward and also helping with um, engaging the community um, around these issues. Because there will be an opportunity for the community to give input, and we want to make sure that the community is engaged in Wainimi and has a say and a seat.
Thank you. I need to stop you there. Uh, next on the topic will be Louise. Give us your thoughts on how to deal with the difficult property with your neighbor and environmental issues that are related to it.
Well, the environment is important. I think patience is the big key. I also attended the Town Hall for the EPA update on the Halico site and its cleanup. Um, you know, big projects like that and big government, it takes time. There's a lot of studies, a lot of reports that have to be done, a lot of assessments. The city's hands are really tied right now as far as being involved and be able to push it forward because the federal government or agency is handling it. I think as it's further along down the line, this, the city will be able to offer more input on what's going to happen with the site once it is cleaned up. So I think keeping the community engaged as of the process. Uh, one of the issues that came up is that the homeless that do go out and camp out there, you know, a few years ago, I went out and helped try to feed them during Thanksgiving and there's people that got shot. So I think safety and security around the area while it's being cleaned up is important and it's something that the city, the city should focus on, um, whether it's monitoring, you know, passing by and driving by the area to keep the pa- place safer while it is in the process of being reviewed and cleaned up by the EPA.
Thank you. Seth, you're our next speaker on the topic of environmental issues, things related to uh, neighboring property.
Yeah, no problem. The Halco, yes, the Halco site uh, has been a point of contention for some time. One of the candidates just said about twenty years. Um, I don't know the exact years on that. I would be shocked if it's been that long and that we're still trying to mitigate this problem that we've had for all these years. We do have a problem with the homeless going in there and the dangers of that, of any type of population being within that area. We have the, we we have no choice but to coordinate and collaborate with the EPA on how to mitigate this problem. There's not, there's not one easy answer uh, that goes on the high tides or something. That's a natural occurring phenomenon that we're going to have to deal with, the sand mitigation. We don't have to worry about that. We've been replenished year, every couple of years, uh, this has been done uh, by the Corps of Engineers. So we're not, I don't think we have a problem there. Maybe sometime down the future, we're going to have a problem with the high tides. But with respect to the Halco site, um, I don't have a one answer for that other than cooperating with the EPA, finding out why it's taken so long to mitigate this problem and how we can get commuting involved, to raise their voices on this issue so we get it taken care of.
We need to go to our next speaker. That will be Laura. Would you please respond, Laura?
Yes, the Halico site in Ormond Beach has been on my um, radar for many years, even before I was on the city council. Once I joined the city council, I worked very closely uh, with the um, city of Oxnar, the county, and um, our local board of supervisors in addressing the issues of Ormond Beach and and the Halico site. Because we have a special, we have an interest, a vested interest in making sure that that nature conservancy area is protected. Our visitors, our residents, they take walks on the beach, they end up over on the Oxnard side near the Halico site, and then they encounter homeless encampments and other dangerous um, elements um, there in in the area that should be clean and and pristine. Um, this is another's issue that requires regional cap- collaboration. I know the EPA uh, through the Town Hall meeting is working on it, but unfortunately, it takes a lot of time. We have to keep advocating for attention to that area.
Thank you. Martha, next up?
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I'll just add, yes, I participated also in um, that event. And so the EPA, the study, the results of this study um, were that uh, there were no um, uh, issues or hazardous or contamination issues with anyone that is not digging in the site. However, there were more questions um, that could not be answered. So I think we need to continue to engage um, with the EPA and determine uh, what's going on with that. The other part is, is that uh, there was some work uh, that was done as relates to um, Ormond Beach, the lagoon, because there were uh, thought to be, or there may be issues with the underground contamination affecting the water that actually runs through the lagoons there. So there is some work there. So we, we just need to to stay vigilant and stay connected and continue to be engaged um, with our, both our community and the EPA.
Thank you. Rich, question comes to you.
Okay, Rich.
A beautiful potential wetlands next to where I lived. Um, it's been a shame that I cannot understand why way back when this prized property was used for industrial purposes. Uh, it's not a, it's been a superb unsay for many years. It's going to take, I think, the entire community in the region to be enraged that this is continuing to happen. Um, I I've been on the Ventura County Air Pollution Board. Uh, it's a a topic that comes up from time to time. And you know, people are very, very frustrated with that. Uh, one, one idea I had would be um, if we're um, very similar, they were able to redevelop the La Baina Wetlands in West Los Angeles. And what that took was a balance of perhaps providing development, probably closer to Wainimi Road so that they have the funds to be able to make that truly a wetlands that everybody can enjoy. Uh, it's going to take lots of money.
Thank you, Richard. And next uh, on that will be Tom, Thomas, if you'll answer that question for us, please, on environmental issues.
Absolutely. So um, again, it's it's a problem. It definitely is a problem. Um, and I think part, and I think what what makes it even worse, the problem even worse, is there's very little communication to the community. You know, any of government agency, whether it's the state, whether it's the local or the county, whether it's federal government, it takes a lot of time. They drag their feet. Um, and I think the the being transparent, the 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 city council should be transparent with the community. This is where we are in the process, and this is what happens next. Whether it's put it up on the Port Wainimi website or announce it at the city council meetings or something along those lines. Um, but something definitely needs to be done, and I think we need to work with uh, Oxnard and get them, you know, maybe we'll talk to their city council and get them to help us push this right direction. But uh, it's just one of those things that sometimes just takes time to get this stuff going.
Thank you. Our next question uh, is a good one to follow a tough one, I think. The question has come to us, what would you do if you were to receive a million dollars for the use in the city in any way? What would be some of your priorities for the use of that money? What would you do with it? What projects? And how would you involve the public in the decision-making prod- process uh, for something as exciting as having new money in the city? So that's a big question, and we're going to start that round with Louise, please.
Hi, thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. A million dollars sounds like a lot, but it really isn't. You know, there, there's not much you can do with that, but there are different organizations we can reach out to possibly. I think maybe look at purchasing some of the smaller buildings to convert to trip to temporary housing. That's kind of costly. But you could also contract different organizations. There's, you know, when it comes to homeless, sober living homes are available. You know, the city could cut some of those or use some of those funds to pay for a month or two to three months for them to get off the streets. And get themselves together and, you know, seek, um, help. Might want to invest obviously in our parks and maybe some, um, activities for the community to enjoy. But, um, in this day and age, you know, a million dollars really doesn't go a long way. So, you know, it'd be the things that need, um, attention right away. I would put that money towards.
Thank you. Next, Martha, your thoughts on what you might do if a million dollars came to the city and how you would engage the public with that?
Yeah, I think that, I think that takes me back to the safety, uh, of the city. Um, I'm hearing a lot with Kevin seeing that, um, uh, that the residents, they want, uh, the bumps in the roads, right? They want stop signs. Um, and so I think that I would start by looking at those, those things that we can do. Um, in the, in the safety area. But then on top of that, I'd like to go to the parks, parks and recreation. We're coming out of COVID. I think we need to support our residents by creating and opening our parks, uh, to allow them to go out and, um, to be able to, um, be socially active again with the, um, with their, um, uh, community members. So I would, I really would like to do something with the parks, um, update some of the restaurants possibly in the parks. I'm seeing that there's water fountains not working in the parks. And so there's a lot of small things. I think we can get a lot done. With the small things with a million dollars.
Thank you. Seth, your opportunity on that question, please?
Yes, thank you. Um, I would have to say we need more resources and more, more vibe, more viable resources for our homeless issues that we're having. This is a national problem. It's not going away. We're going to have it for many years to come until we have the guts to stand up and address it properly. Uh, safety lights along Channel Islands. People are having to, uh, uh, take chances going across from, say, Lido Boulevard, crossing over to, uh, Channel Islands. There's been, uh, several wrecks already. We've had deaths already on Ventura Road. I don't know if it's from speeding or not, but, um, the safety enhancements for, uh, raised cross, crosswalks, uh, for our children by our schools. Uh, within our neighborhoods, they've actually been doing that, I think, on Park Avenue. We have to invest in our youth and programs that will keep our kids, uh, busy. Beach mats I've been talking about for a year, dog park supposed to be in the master plan. There's a lot of things that we can do with that money, uh, that would be viable for the community and not on, on a selfish note.
Thank you. Uh, Thomas, your thoughts on what you might do if there was, uh, a million dollars coming your way? And how you would involve the community in that discussion?
Okay, um, I have two things in particular, and it wouldn't even cost a million dollars. I think they, we need to figure out that it's, I wouldn't call wheelchair access to the beach or to the water. I would call it, um, uh, because when you fall, when you call wheelchair access, you fall under the ADA, the American Disabilities Act. If you call an alternative access to the beach, where you can bring strollers or the little wagons and everything like that, that's doable. For a million dollars, you, you can get a, get bats all the way to one of the Channel Islands if you wanted to. So I think we can actually, that's one of it. The other thing that would be kind of cool is, uh, the baseball fields need an upgrade, need a ma- a major upgrade. Their snack bar is where the Little League makes their money. And they can't even open it up because it's not up to the health codes. So I think we need to pour a little bit of money into there, do the alternative access to the beach. And then if we have a little bit of money left over, do a skate park.
Thank you. All right, uh, Rich, your thoughts on what you might do if a million dollars came your way and how you'd involve the community in making those decisions?
When we did the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, we did have community input, in fact, a, a really diverse community input. Uh, what came of that was, uh, probably projects that cost three times the amount of money that we have to spend. With that in mind, I would, um, uh, I would want to make our parks the jewels of our community. Uh, in this community, there are many families that don't have a lot of finance, financial means to be able to take vacations. And their parks are their vacation. So we want them to feel proud of those things. We want them to have park benches to sit in. We don't want them to have play facilities. We want them to have places for their dogs. And, uh, that would add to the, the, the list that we're maybe not going to be able to get right away. Uh, the other thing that I would do is the infrastructure. While not sexy, we have a 60-year-old water system, uh, that needs, uh, fixing. And we also need to invest.
Sorry, Rich, I need to cut you off there. We need to save with our timer here. And, uh, next, next speaker will be Laura, please.
Okay, thank you. Um, great question. You know, we had this opportunity when we received millions of dollars through the American Rescue Act, uh, following COVID. And we had to go through a process of deciding how we were going to spend that money. A large portion of that money, uh, over $5 million is going right back into our parks, which has been suffering from deferred maintenance. Uh, due to budget shortfalls over the past, uh, years, uh, prior to our time on city council. So the city has a wonderful Parks Master Plan that's going to upgrade Bubbling Springs Park. It's going to fix the, uh, snack bar. We're already on our way to doing that. We're doing a Bubbling Springs Restoration Project. So that money, the money has already been allocated for those projects. How I would use a million, and I agree with Luis, is that it's not a lot, is investing it in, um, incentives for businesses here in the community. And making it, uh, uh, a way, uh, finding ways to spend it through our economic development planning efforts.
Thank you. And we'll wrap up this with, uh, Rabia. Your thoughts, please?
Thank you. And so, and initially it was perfect. I agree with Laura that there is a plan right now to upgrade and update our parks. Um, so my idea are, it's kind of twofold because it is not that much money. But one thing I would like to definitely see is the city investing in installing charging stations for electric vehicles that are beach. I think that we need to promote, um, the use of electrical vehicles. And because it is a desk, we are kind of a destination city and we don't have, uh, and we're kind of far from the freeway. That we need to have some kind of like incentive for electric vehicles to make the trek to, uh, Wainimi Beach. Um, the second thing is definitely investing in our, in the future and in our economy. Put one idea to provide micro loans to small businesses to help update facilities to increase and promote renewable energy use. Um, or to help kind of like start, um, like their, their own, uh, business and encourage that entrepreneurial spirit. But we definitely need to reinvest that money in a way that's going to show dividends and show support for our small business community here in Port Wainimi.
Thank you. It is coming to the conclusion of our, uh, discussion this evening. And so we're ready to do some closing comments with you. I just want to share with the audience and with you some of the topics, a lot of discussion, uh, that you had was about fireworks. People ask questions about how to deal with fireworks, how to deal with the homeless. Uh, more questions about your nuts and bolts, understanding of budgets and how to actually operate a city. And how to engage the community in, uh, important topics for the city of its activities and so on. So lots of other good questions we couldn't get to. So at this time, I'd like to thank you and invite you again to be ready to provide your one minute of closing, uh, statement. And we will start in the reverse order that we had to open this evening. So that will mean Luis, you're up first to start your closing statements for one minute, please.
Thank you. I appreciate the League of Women Voters and Future Leaders of America for your time and participation in hosting this event. Uh, my name is Luis Mendez. And I said before, I've been a longtime resident, 37 years. Um, I love Wainimi and I have, my experience in education has, um, allowed me to acquire the skills necessary to be able to be, collaborate. And work with others to solve problems. I am a problem solver. I have new ideas and I want to bring those ideas to the city of Port Wainimi. And hopefully work in collaboration with some of these candidates and the existing council members. I'm asking you for your, uh, trust and your vote. Please vote Luis Mendez for Port Wainimi City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha, please go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, Martha McQueen Lejeune. Um, I will represent and be an advocate for all residents and decisions. I'll be a steward of your taxpayer dollars. I will work diligently to make Port Wainimi the city, uh, our residents want to continue to call their home. I will bring diversity of thought into all decision makings. I'll be a voice and an advocate for all city residents, ensuring their issues and concerns are being addressed. I will bring all the experiences and skills that led to, uh, my prior successes and my personal, professional and educational life. To the city council. Um, I am requesting your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, uh, next up will be, uh, Thomas. Let's see here.
Okay, well, anyway.
Let's start you over. There you go, Thomas. One minute, sorry.
That's okay. Um, so, um, to be, uh, you, you know, this, Port Wainimi is a great city. It really is. Me and my wife moved here a couple of years ago because it is fabulous. But like every other city, there's little problems. There's a little bit of things that need to be addressed. And, um, I think I bring new ideas to the, uh, new solutions to the problems. And I think bringing those new solutions, we can resolve these issues. Um, but to be fair, and, and when it's all said and done, the city's pretty cool. It's pretty nice. See, you got a beach over there. It's a pretty nice little city. So, uh, let's just build on that. So please vote for me.
Thank you. Seth, your closing comments, please?
Yes, thank you so much. I'm going to focus my attention, uh, hopefully as a new council member for you on the homeless issues, the firewood, the firewood issues that we're having. Uh, the budgets for the future. And I'd like also just for a moment, talk that we've had council, we've had, you've had a council for four years. And there's a lot of things that were deficient on and why they haven't been taken care of is just, it, it just boggles my mind. I'm not saying that they haven't done certain things that have enhanced this community, but it just has not been enough. So many complaints I've heard year after year, we're going to deal with the safety light issues on Channel Islands. Upgrade our parks and the infrastructure there. Uh, I heard about the master plan and the dog park, uh, being all included, but we don't have a state of the city. Why don't we have a state of the city? We should have one every quarter to inform the residents of what's actually going on here. And, um, I'm a people person. I'm helping the homeless. We're doing all these things great in the community. Been doing it for 20 years, nine here, and I'm looking to do it for at least another four for this community. And I hope to gain your vote.
Thank you. Laura Hernandez, your final comments?
Thank you. You know, Port Wainimi needs us, city council members who are experienced, forward-thinking, solution-oriented. We need strong leadership, thoughtful decision-makers and elected body that works hard and collaboratively for the whole community. I bring to the city council, um, advocacy, the, a support for regional collaboration, uh, experience and leadership. And we work very hard, um, in making sure that we are on, at the table when it comes to regional issues such as homelessness. Public safety, water, the environment. Um, I want to continue the good work I started. And, um, I, I accomplished everything that I set out to do. I want to continue working on the city council and pursuing my passion in public service. Thank you.
Thank you. Rabia, you're our next speaker.
Thank you again to the Legal Men Voters as well as the Future Leaders of America. I appreciate the effort that went into hosting today and thank you all for attending. I am asking for your vote to preserve all that we love about Port Wainimi. Much of which is due to the contributions of our dedicated residents of our city. I will be, as a council member, if elected, I will be accessible and open-minded. My training and background as an attorney means I understand complex legal documents and governing regulations. I'll be a voice for the community in council sessions and I know how to ask the right questions. I can, I, and I will ensure that the needs of our residents always come first. I'm proud to be endorsed by our public safety agencies as well as local labor unions. All who believe in my vision for the future of Wainimi and who trust in my leadership to get us there. You can learn more about my campaign and platform by visiting my website at www dot vote Rabia dot com. And I respectfully ask for your vote.
Thank you. And Rich, you will close us out this evening.
In the past year, four years, we've accomplished a lot. Um, we've improved safety. We've put an emphasis on families and youth programs. Uh, we've, um, developed more affordable housing. Um, we've worked actively to deal with the environmental issues and the clean air. As we move forward, we need to, um, improve traffic. We need to listen and we need to be creative in our decision and policymaking. Uh, there's not one thing that fits all. Um, homelessness is a problem. There's, we need to work with our county to make that better. We have a comp, um, I'm honored, I would be honored to have your vote and to continue, uh, this voyage with you. Uh, because together we can make it happen.
Thank you. And I'd like to say to all the candidates, we appreciate that you're running. We know it's a, it's a big effort. But we also know that this is what contributes to the democratic process and free and fair elections. So we wish you well and thank you for your participation tonight. I'd also like to thank, uh, some of the members of the League of Women Voters who've been assisting on this evening. Pat Essick, Maddie Park, Wayne Morgan, Kathy Morgan. Thank you so much. And as we close, I do want to just remind the people that are watching, uh, to please visit the League of Women Voter website, which is, www dot LWVventura county dot org. On that website, you can learn more about registration status, Dropbox, how to vote, voting centers, how to track your ballot. And we have information on all the candidates and propositions across the state and on your ballot. With that, uh, we thank you all. Please vote and good evening. I'm Cheryl Collard for the League of Women Voters. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.